Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Galdarlos.
Here.
Merrinka.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Trust.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
Mayor Moss.
Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Reverend Ryan Wieland here. Always a pleasure to see you here from Granville Methodist Church. So, for those who are interested, please join Reverend for invocation and Father, the Pledge of Allegiance.
As you feel comfortable doing so, I'd invite you to join me in a word of prayer. Let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this evening, for this beautiful day, and for this opportunity to gather in this time of meeting. We pray that your presence might be among us, that we might be truly thankful for this community in which we live and work, and all of the blessings that we enjoy on a daily basis. As we begin a new school year, we pray for students and teachers and administrators and parents as well during this time of transition. We pray for their health and safety and learning throughout this school year, and we pray, oh Lord, that in this time, we might reflect your grace through the ways in which we interact with one another and the care we show for the least of these in this community. Guide us by your grace. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
At the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, as always. Thanks for being here. Thanks, Ryan. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to note that Mayor Moss and Councilmember Trust are traveling today and asked to be excused for their absence. So, is there a motion to excuse Paul Trust from tonight's meeting?
Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll on that one, please?
Councilmember Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. And secondly, looking to have a motion to excuse Mayor Moss from tonight's meeting.
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Well, before you have the agenda for tonight's meeting, and is there a motion to approve that agenda as presented? Actually, yeah, is there a motion to approve that agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion and support. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Great. You also have before you the minutes from August 8th, which seems like an awful long time ago. It was only two weeks. Summer's flying by. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from August 8th? Any additions, corrections, anything you'd like to note?
Motion's approved.
Support. Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. All those opposed, please say no. Great. Presentation of bills. Ken, have a hefty amount.
Just one really minor correction at the very top of page two. Just missing the last name there. Not a big deal, but just a minor correction. We know who we meant. Did you catch that?
Second page?
Just very, very top line of the second page. It's just missing the last name.
Thanks for that. Marcy got that. All right. Presentation of bills. We have a pretty hefty amount total. Let's say we're still dealing with some old fiscal stuff and some new fiscal stuff. Ken, take us through the old fiscal bills, please.
Well, the number of invoices for the old fiscal year is fairly short, but the amount is pretty impressive, and that's because nearly all of it, 354,000 out of 400, is all related to a single invoice, and that was for the local street and parking lot paving that we did at the end of the fiscal year. So, all those projects were completed, and now the invoice is due. The only other item I flagged from the old fiscal year would be the payments to WCET of $9,011.18, and that's the just straight pass-through of peg dollars that we receive from Comcast. So, we're just the conduit to get those to the public access channel. The rest of the bills were fairly routine, and if there are questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Great. Thanks, Ken. Any questions about the bills from the old fiscal year for Ken? If not, is there a motion to approve the amount, the old fiscal year bills, an amount of $407,154.21?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. New fiscal year, not much less, but probably some higher ticket items there. Ken, would you walk us through the new fiscal year bills?
Yeah, a lot longer list there, as you might expect now that we're rolling into August. So, these are probably reflective of a lot of full-month billings in July, or a full month of invoices. Just a few I highlighted. City of Walker is on there, and I think that's the first that we've seen of the regular billings from Walker for the IT collaboration with the city, and that was $12,149. On page one and three of the invoice list, on duty gear, that was seven replacement body armor sets for the police department under a blanket purchase order, and then also four replacement sets for the court and probation, and that was relative to a February 14 city council action to approve that purchase. In the total of those 11 sets was just under $11,000. And then, last thing, on page seven, Tidewater is a new vendor. Council approved on July 25, an amendment to the blanket purchase orders to add a new polymer provider for the wastewater treatment plant. And so, this is, I believe, the first billing you've seen from them. And again, those are the ones I thought were most relevant for discussion, but if there's other ones, please let me know.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ken on the new fiscal year bills? No? Is there a motion to approve the new fiscal year bill in the amount of $359,740.28?
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Public comment? Anybody here from the public, welcome to address the council. Please come on up to the podium, state your name, your address, tell us what is on your mind. Welcome.
Thank you. Do you mind if I wear my mask?
It's up to you.
We're going to Europe next week, and I don't want to get sick. My name is Carol Perschbacher, and my address is 4356 Redstone Court, Southwest. That's in Granville. Our backyard, if you would keep going, I want to say north on Potomac, you would run into our backyard. And I'm up here because some of us neighbors are concerned about the traffic at that particular Potomac and 44th Street. Since the hotel has been there, there's been a lot more traffic. There is no crosswalk for pedestrians to cross at that intersection. A lot of us on the other side like to go to restaurants, and sometimes it's just very difficult to get across that particular intersection. At times, the traffic, people turning left off of Potomac going north onto 44th Street is all the way back to the road that goes to the hotel and back by Olive Garden. So, the traffic, in my opinion, in the last four years has increased dramatically. And I don't know how, I didn't know who to address or how to go about having this surveyed or taken a look at, whatever needs to be done. I just think, the speed limit is 40 miles an hour. I don't think anybody ever goes 40 miles an hour. It's pretty fast through there. I take a three-mile walk from our house, and I pass Paiute and Peshtigo. I know there's a three-way stop sign there. I don't know, I think that's probably for pedestrians and to control the traffic. There's also another three-way stop sign at Fortieth and Mohawk that I assume is for the same reason. I'd like to see something, even if it's just a crosswalk, for pedestrians to cross there safely, but I'd like to see a survey done on that particular corner, just because I know that the hotel has brought more traffic. It seems to me that people are using the old 44th Street as a shortcut. I see them getting off at Rivertown Parkway and then making a left onto Potomac. I don't know why they just don't use Rivertown and then go to Potomac, but it's, you know, it's a concern, and there have been several accidents there, and I just don't want to see any pedestrians get hurt or any serious accidents. I love Granville. I love the small feeling, but in that area, it's like I'm living in a pretty big city. So, am I addressing the right people for this, or?
You are. Thank you, Carol.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that the council is, in general, I think, very big on walkability in the community.
Right.
I saw our city manager taking some notes, so I think we'll go back and see what we can do to, you know, investigate the problem and hopefully create a safer area for you to walk.
I appreciate that, and like I said, we have young kids in the neighborhood, and I just so worry about a fatality, and I just really would hate to see that. I know I did try to call the City of Granville, and they sent me to the police department, and then the police department sent me to the sheriff, somehow got the sheriff, and they sent me, so I didn't know who to call, so that's why I'm here today.
I think if you talk to all of us, maybe you'll get...
There you go. But that's all I have to say. I don't know if I have to get a petition going? Do I need to get a petition going around the... Okay, perfect. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Carol. Thank you. Anybody else? Moving along, we have a zoning ordinance that we need to consider removing from the table and adopt. Ken, anything you want to talk about with that, or do you want to have Matt walk us through that?
Why don't I just remind everybody where we are, and then if there's questions, we certainly can have Matt answer those. But council adopted this at the la, or introduced this at the last meeting two weeks ago. It's a fairly simple amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city. It was meant to fill a gap that was unintentionally created and to put consistent rules for both small and large group homes. And so, the ordinance that was adopted two weeks ago, that's the same ordinance that you see before you tonight, it's not changed at all. Matt told me the council had asked for a little contact with some of the licensed facilities in town to see if there were any comment on the proposed change, and as of now, we have not received any comments there. So, in fact, they were invited to the meeting if they wished to attend as well, so I don't think anybody here, I recognize everybody, so I guess there's no additional comments. Matt, do you have anything else you want to add?
No. This kind of indicated is pretty simple request for the zoning amendment. It's the place to allow larger homes as special land uses and multifamily zones and amend special land use section, so we have some criteria for larger homes as well as smaller homes in neighborhoods, so it can't be a large concentration. We did reach out to the five nonprofits that operate Granville group homes, and again, we haven't heard back from anyone. We didn't invite them to either contact us either by phone or email or show up with them. We have to answer the question.
Before we open that up for questions, we should remove it from the table first, correct? All right. Marcy, that is zoning ordinance 281-Y, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to remove from the table zoning ordinance 281-Y?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Council, any questions for Ken or Matt, or any thoughts on this?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say thank you for reaching out to the folks we have in this community, the nonprofits, and appreciate that. And I have no problem with this ordinance in the sense that it's adding large groups into the zoning R3. I guess my concern all along was just, and I was a little surprised, like Mayor Moss was, the definition of a small group home. And I was always under the impression that it was like eight residents or less, and I think you threw out the number six or less. And again, I have no problem regulating a large group situation, I just think I'll make sure we're staying open to small group homes. And I don't know, is that a number that's a state statute or a city statute? Just as a person that has my wife's family and I family, three special needs individual, I know how hard it is to house some of these people, so, I mean, I guess that's my concern is that we don't make it hard for small homes or to house this demographic in our city, so.
The numbers are regulated by the state, whether it's a family group home or a small group home or a large group home. There's actually some legislation going on now to adjust those numbers to add one to each category, so you may see that coming up in the future. So, yeah. We have to allow all the land uses, as I indicated at the last meeting, and we added as a definition, if we have it as a definition in the ordinance, we certainly have to allow it somewhere. So, and this amendment resolves that matter.
So, if somebody wanted to come in and have a group home with six residents in a four-bedroom home, that's permissible in R1?
Correct. We have, we cannot have any regulation over that.
Just clarifying what when Matt said, the six or fewer really called adult residential facilities. I think there's a name, state law, and it's all regulated by state laws. Six or fewer have to be treated as a single-family residential use by state law.
Okay.
Once you get bigger than that, seven to 12 is a small group, and then large group is 13 to 20, and that's all by state law.
Anybody else? If there's no other questions, looking for a motion to adopt zoning ordinance 281-Y.
So moved. Support.
Support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. We have the consent agenda before you, and before we go through that, well, let me, actually, what, is there any questions about the consent agenda before we go through that? Are there any topics there? Well, you have the reports from the EMS fire from July, investments also from July. You have the August 10, July 4 celebration committee meeting. The DDA met on August 11th. You have those minutes. There is a special project fund budget amendment. It looks like that was adding, or Ken, maybe a small clerical typo error about adding the mini-grants in there as a line?
It was just the oversight and the budget adoption, and it was related to the mini-grants, so Tammy caught that and just put it out there to get it completely correct. It is exactly what the council had talked about. It's where we're spending funds now for mini-grants, so it's always been there, been the city's intent to fund that, even at the budget adoption, just didn't make it into the final resolution.
Okay. And then, it looks like we have a memo from the chief about the two-way radio equipment dispensal from the fire department from all-season distribution of $1,170. Chief, are we happy with that number?
It was the best of the solicitations we made.
Sounds good. So, a motion to approve the consent agenda should be in the best interest of the city because we are seeking reimbursement for some items there. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. City manager's report. Ken, handful of items on there. Walk us through what...
Yeah, I think, Charlie, would you mind stepping up and just explaining our expansion of the basketball court replacement?
The special project, the basketball courts, we put in $25,000 to do one court. We were able to, a couple of months ago, got a bit of cost to do, we could do two of them for less than that. Well, since that time, it's gone up over $4,000 per court. So, there is money in the fund balance of the special project to do these two courts, and I'd like to get them done because they both are in need of it. We will, DPW will tear the old ones out, and the company will come in and put two layers, inch and a half each, on the courts.
What about the pavement markings on that?
The pavement markings? We may wait till next year into the next budget to do that.
Okay.
Because it's probably going to be $7,000 or something to do that, so we can hold off for a year on that.
Would that be done yet, this fall or summer?
The courts? Yes.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Charlie? No? All right. So, looking for a motion to approve the special project awarding Great Lakes paving in the amount of $30,200 to replace both Heritage and Calvin Crest Park in the best interest of the city.
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Charlie, if you're up here, can you walk us through the historical?
Sure. Last year, we put some money, last year's budget, we put $10,000 in there to do some painting and some fixing up of the new windows in the old schoolhouse through the historical people, and we've got the windows and stuff, and now it's time that we need to get it painted, and we've got a cost to paint it for, I think it was $5,400. And we still got a couple other, we've got to fix the cupola on top of it, and that'll be done here soon also. So, we're going to ask to get this, hire this gentleman to do the painting of the old schoolhouse. It's going to be done.
Justin, I'm sure your historical folks will be happy about that.
Yes, they will. Both the exterior painting and the cupola, I've heard a lot about both, so they'll be very happy.
Any other questions for Charlie on the painting? Looking for a motion to approve Carrie Vanderwood painting, amount of $5,400 in the best interest of the city to paint the exterior of the historical building.
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie. Ken, policy review, cell phones.
Well, if Tammy step up, she's checking all the items off her list before she gets out the door, and this was one of those things on her list. It's an update of an existing policy with a couple of key changes.
Yeah, it is an update to an existing policy. We've had some changes over the past few years where a lot of our technology and a lot of our employees are using the cell phones. The Clean Water Plan uses it over even having desk phones out there for their employees. But the main changes in this particular cellphone policy is, number one, we're going to offer a stipend to those who are required to have phones in order for the city to be able to get ahold of them, but don't want to go off their family plan or, you know, carry two phones or anything like that. So, we're going to offer a $35 a month stipend for those employees. And then, the second one is that each department is going to do their own purchasing and monitoring of the cellphone usage and the cellphone purchases and that type of thing. So, those are the two major changes in there. Not a lot else going on. We have about 23 employees right now that have city cell phones, and there will probably be 10 added for the stipend portion of the policy.
Any questions for Tammy?
I'm just wondering how you land on $35?
We did a survey. I did a survey out to our lister for the MJFOA, and that was pretty much the average of what people pay. Some of them vary between employees and department heads or, you know, but pretty much so the average was about $35, so we went kind of the middle of the road.
Sure. And are the employees okay with that? I mean, it sounds a little light to me.
I didn't ask for the employee opinion on that. I just know, because they can also use it for their personal use, so it's, you know, it's not just for city business, so if it doesn't cover their entire plan, then that will cover the personal use they have on the phone, so.
Fine.
I did get a department head comments on it, but I did not get individual employee comments on it.
Any else? There is no policy number to this, is there, Marcy? It's just a motion to adopt a cellphone policy?
Yeah, and actually, what we typically do with policies is we offer a two-step process informally. Policies and changes, sometimes they're the things that you need a little time to digest, and so, we're not under the gun for any timeframe purposes here. If council would like to take a look at the policy, think about it a little bit, the intent tonight was to get your comments or questions or suggestions out, and then we could modify the policy to whatever extent the council might wish to do so before you adopt it. So, there's no need to adopt tonight. Council certainly could if you choose to do that, so it's completely up to the council.
I would move to adopt as presented.
Anybody else want to sit on it or move forward?
I just have a couple of questions. You'd be the second, though.
I support. Okay. So, we're already doing a stipend for some employees?
Yeah, we do not have a stipend right now.
Some people are using their personal cell phones for work purposes, so this would be kind of, and then others are using city-provided cell phones? I guess I'm curious, is everybody required, if you're using a personal phone and you're being reimbursed, is there any kind of requirement that comes with that as far as installation of any kind of software, or? I know it says in here that the city treasurer would have the ability to audit the use or whatever. What does that mean?
Well, if we get the bell, we can see the usage they have for, I can monitor their usage that's on the phone, you know, the phone numbers that they call, that type of thing. Software being installed on the phone, they're pretty much, they're going to purchase their own phone, so the software that's going to be installed, the only thing that that would affect is the email that they set up, and that's secure through, you know, Outlook, Microsoft Outlook. So, I wouldn't think that we didn't plan on having any kind of, this is software you can install on your phone.
Okay. I guess I'm just thinking like, primarily would be probably email, text messages, and phone calls, right? They wouldn't be like, expected to have something installed to be able to access any city systems or anything like that where there'd be security concerns?
No. It's just for communication purposes, so that they're available after hours when they're not here at work, or if they're out on the road while they are at work, but it's primarily phone, text, you know, they send a text picture through text type of thing, and to be able to check their emails throughout the day, it wouldn't be anything more than that, really.
Okay. And just to clarify, the data usage monitoring is only for people who use the city option, not their own personal?
Right. We're not their own, no, I would not get access to their personal records, no.
Right. And I'm guessing most employees select to use their own personal device, or?
Some do, some don't.
Okay.
You know, there are some employees who have both a personal phone and a city cellphone, so that they don't intermix at all, so. And there's a little wide variety of both.
Sounds like we have a motion to adopt the policy and support. Would you call the roll on that?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal?
Yes. Well, speaking of Tammy, we have a confirmation here that council needs to look, take a look at. And I know that councilmembers Tim, Justin and Paul, I'd ask you guys to weigh in on this a little bit. But Ken, if you want to walk us through the appointment of the new finance director?
Yeah, we, we're losing an excellent one here and that's unfortunate for us. But we have taken steps to try to minimize any gap that we have. And that's partly due to Tammy's diligence and letting us know in advance that she'd be leaving the state. And then also due to the committee being diligent about getting the process underway. So we've gone through the process of interviewing, learned a lot about our, our finalist candidates that were selected to interview. The interview team, who that the committee was already talked about, as well as Assistant City Manager Matt Bugs and Jana Ostoff, our HR assistant. And had a chance to, in a pretty in-depth, I think it was, I think they all wound up in about an hour long interview, got to know the folks that were offering themselves for employment in this position in Granville and how they might fit into the city and the responsibilities that we have in this job, which is extensive. You know, it's, it's the primary custodian of all the public funds for the city. Its investments, its purchases, its overseeing the finance office, including payroll and utility billing. So it's pretty all encompassing. And as you can tell, it also has gotten into cellphone usage and just about everything else under the sun. So door locks, I guess, was one of our fun things this summer. We upgraded those. So at the completion of that process, I, I took some time to kind of digest what I had heard, as well as the comments of the committee. And then further spoke to, in particular, the department heads in the city that had the largest budgets or the most complex budgets or the budgets that have the most overlap with the finance office. And I, I put down the appointment memo you've got in your packet, some of the things that we heard from the department heads here with regard to what they hope to, hope the new finance director will bring to the table. And they mentioned several things consistently across the department heads. Honesty, responsibility, a lot of conversation about team play and flexibility, long-term planning. Those are some of the general aspects. And then they got specific about spreadsheets and bonding, utility rate studies, rate setting, and the procedures that come with our responsibilities to the state and federal government for our finances. It was, again, more than one, in fact, I think it was just about everybody that I, I asked for some input on. Referenced how important the budget process was in the city from a department head perspective. And I think you guys all know from a council perspective how important that is too. So budget development experience. And then from the department heads in particular, they were hoping to see a continuation of the kind of flexibility and team play that we've had for many years with Tammy. So that department heads are involved in their finances of their department and able to participate deeply in, in setting their budget priorities. And, and even after the budget's approved, how do we handle unexpected expenses that pop up or, or changes since budget approval? So those were helpful to me. It underscored how important experience was at this point. When we're losing a finance director, it's been here for a couple of decades doing this work. You kind of get, you know, probably a little complacent, I guess I'll call it, you know, it's just, it's easy. Tammy's there, she's there to do this. But now we're looking for somebody that will do the same thing in the future. So experience going out the door with Tammy and then also there'll be a transition for city manager coming. So that experience and having a seasoned finance director really is what led me to the candidate that I would like to recommend for appointment to the city council. Her name is Jane Sowerman. Jane is currently the Director of Finance and also the City Cork, the City of Hastings. She's been there since 2018, but she's got a lot of experience prior to that as a Chief Financial Officer and also as a governmental auditor. And even as a young person, at the beginning of her career, was the elected treasurer for the City of Kentwood. So what we're seeing in Jane is a very municipal governmental focused person and finance expert. And that's, that's what we need here at this point in time. I didn't mention, but we also have a young staff in the, in the finance office. And we've had several new positions filled or positions filled newly in recent years. So that steady hand and, and good experience, again, is underscored as a necessity for the city. So her resume, Jane's resume and her application is there with all the details. But I think you'll see in there that all the skills that would have appeared on our job description for the finance director and all those items that are kind of unique to city government, things like OPEB and cash management and budgeting and bonding, even down to the software we use for our financial systems. These are things that she has day-to-day experience in and responsibility for in her current role. So we have sat, Jane and I have sat down since the interview. I did make a contingent offer of employment to her for this position, which she has accepted. And the council's got a copy of that on your table tonight. So one of the contingencies amongst the standard ones, it's different for finance, for department heads in the City of Granville. Our treasurer requires the department heads be confirmed by the city council, appointed by the manager, confirmed by council. So her employment is contingent upon council action tonight to confirm the appointment. And she is very enthusiastic about joining Granville. She's got some history in the community that she knows it very well and is eager to join the, the team. So I'd like to put forth Jane Sowerman's name for council confirmation.
Great. Thanks, Ken. That memo was great and obviously your explanation even better. Tim or Justin, anything you guys want to add to this? I know you're part of that mini-committee.
Um, yeah, I, I wholly agree with this recommendation. I think she brings incredible experience. I was really impressed by, as Ken highlighted in here, her willingness to stand up often in difficult situations for what's right and demonstrate integrity. And so I think that will serve the city well. I do want to say, we had a good problem that, you know, after listening to all of the candidates, there wasn't one who afterwards we thought, what did that person think? They were, you know, have a shot getting into this position. They were all very quality candidates. I do just want to, once again, bring to the council's attention, Tammy mentioned it. I think this interview process made it more clear to me that I think we ought to give consideration to the re-implementation of a deputy finance director or deputy treasurer. We're losing considerable amount of institutional knowledge. And Jane will come in and I think she'll do a phenomenal job. It would be helpful, I think, for her to be able to provide that knowledge in a mentorship role to someone who will then be prepared in, you know, hopefully the distant future to take on those responsibilities. So I'd like to see us consider re-implementing that position, restoring it, because it will serve, serve the city very well.
Thanks.
You know, I think the, the key word for Jane is experience and I'm very excited because she's a person who can step right in and, and be a leader, do the job. I, I want to say thanks to Ken. I appreciate how Ken solicits input and asks for our observations and listens. Talks to the department head, is very thorough in his, his summary to us. And, you know, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind Jane. I agree with Justin. We, we like the, the other one, the other candidates as well, but they're younger. And so that is something we probably want to take a look at. We're fortunate, this, this go-around, to be able to get a person who can step in with all this experience. And, but we might not have that next time. So we should, we should think in terms of a deputy or an assistant, someone we can start training.
And for the rest of the council, the committee members, you know, heard it from Tammy at the meeting. But that's how Tammy started in the City of Granville. Came in in a deputy finance director position and was able to, you know, kind of ramp up to that level. And the departure was unexpected, but Tammy shared with us that her intention would have been, if she were winding down and retiring in Granville, to suggest this to the city council at that time. So we weren't able to have the benefit of that because of circumstances here. But I, I think we all heard the same thing and, and took it to heart. So something probably for the next budget go-around to start, you know, thinking about more specifically.
Great. Well, and it looks like if we confirm her appointment, she will start a whopping one and a half days after Tammy's departure. The gap will be small, right? If there's no other questions or comments, look for a motion to confirm the appointment of Jane Sowerman to the finance director position.
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal?
Yes. And looking at the calendar briefly, this is the last council meeting that Tammy will be a part of. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we can save the applause for the council member comments as we'll finish up through the city manager report. Ken, do you want to, do we have Matt come up and talk about the Rivertown Commons?
Yeah, Matt will do that.
Okay.
This was a late-breaking issue on Friday. Marcy had actually finished the packet and I ran down the hall for this one because we promised we could get this done tonight. Essentially, Rivertown Commons, as you know, is a huge, I think it's over five hundred unit apartment complex. It's being built south of Target. There is an existing water main that serves the former greenhouse. And two of these buildings are going to be set where that main is. So the plan is to reroute that main around those two buildings. The financing will not, can't be released for these two buildings until this water main issue, which is a utility easement, is fixed. Everything's ready to go, ready to go. And they found out this is an issue Friday. We promised we'd help out with this. So essentially, it's just amending that easement. The technical term is we have to release the existing easement and accept the new easement for this water main. And what you allow them to get to financing and start construction on these two utility buildings. Be happy to answer any questions.
Was this something that, you know, maybe we should have caught at the planning commission level or not necessarily?
You know, our engineer identified it in his review. Something they should have addressed earlier on. I'm not trying to point blank, but it was their issue to fix. I mean, bring it to us. Ultimately, the ones that have to release and accept it. But to wait this late was kind of a surprise for me as well, so.
Who's responsible for the cost of relocating the water main?
They are.
We just have to make sure that everything's kind of approved and then they take it from there.
Yep, Martin Boujic will do all that. Do your work and if there's a problem, they get us involved. Work is a team, what they're, what Martin.
Matt, could you, we've got some documents on our desk here tonight that we didn't have in the packet, I don't think. And it, it looks to me, I think when you and I talked on Friday morning, whatever, last minute, I think we thought they were completely eliminating an existing water main and then putting it in somewhere else entirely than the packet documents look like. Maybe it was just a reduction in the width of an existing water main easement.
The length of the easement.
The length.
It, it could, and then rerouting the part that they're, are releasing around the two buildings.
There's a document on our desk here tonight, talks about a partial release. And it talks about the original utility easement area, then it talks about a partial release of the original utility easement. And a continuation, then it looks to me like a continuation of the remainder of the utility easement. So you really have it all in one document here, here tonight, which is fine. So we're going to approve this document because it continues the existence of the utility easement. I just wanted to make sure that our engineers or Charlie or somebody is comfortable that what, what we are now getting is sufficient to handle the water main.
I'm, I'm good, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So is Tim Hopefer. He's been working with us throughout this.
At Martin Boujic?
Yes.
Good, thank you. And so, Matt, based on what they've just given us here tonight, is, is, is that sufficient just to adopt this motion? And because it talks about a continuation of the existing one, which I assume is sufficient for the water main after the amendment, so to speak, the release of the remainder? Or is there yet a second document that we should be looking at?
But there's other documents that were in your packet. This showed up early this morning, so we got it out for you today.
So I guess Randy, are we looking for an approval, an approval to release and accept in the same motion? Because it's all included in one document or do we need two separate?
Well, to be safe, let's adopt this document. That's a partial release document, which I think continues what we want. But in addition, have another motion which accepts the grant of an easement from them to us. Which is, I think, in the packet. So we'll have two motions still, one to release and one to accept. That way, even though the first one, one which is to approve the release, appears to me to take care of the continuation of the existing easement. Just in case it doesn't, let's adopt the other, so we have the belt suspenders, I guess, as they say.
Because this popped up so late, is there any merit in the motions being subject to final city attorney approval or city engineer approval or something that just gives us one final check?
Yeah, I think I'd be comfortable doing that, having the engineer sign off on what we're getting is being sufficient to maintain what we want to maintain. We don't want to be in a position where we now don't have an easement that's sufficient. And it looks like Charlie's comfortable with it, but we got these documents at the last minute.
I think that can be confirmed real quick. Maybe we're already there.
Tim's been a funnel through all this. He's the one who's been forwarding me these documents.
But what I'm still not sure about is whether this latest document serves to grant an easement that we still need. You know, it's continuing an existing easement.
Okay.
But do we need another one that grants us additional easement, so to speak, or a different location, a new one? And so let's adopt something that accepts the grant to make sure we got something, but still have the whole thing looked at by Martin Boujic, just to be sure, so we don't have to do it again.
Hold them up and?
Yeah. We don't want to hold them up. It's not our problem, but still, we try to work with the developer when we can.
That makes sense.
Any other specifics on the easement requests? Well, I guess we're looking for anybody who remembered everything that Randy said. If it's a quid pro motion.
First one is this one.
Yeah, to accept, the first one would be to accept, I'm sorry, to release the easement according to this document subject to city attorney and/or engineers.
Just make city engineers.
City engineers.
Motion.
Support. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merrenga?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal?
Yes. So the second motion would be to accept any new easements as part of this agreement, correct?
Basically, accept a new easement if necessary.
If necessary.
And again, subject to review and approval by the city engineer.
What he said.
Motion.
Support. And it would be necessary for a new easement, right? You want that recorded if they're going to reroute that?
Oh, if it's going to be, yeah, the engineer would require it, that would be recorded.
Great, motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merrenga?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal?
Yes. Randy, thank you for always chiming in.
May not be necessary, but just to be.
Make our jobs potentially easier, yes. Well, before we enter into a closed session, Ken, is there anything else on the city manager's report you'd like to go after?
Marcy, Marcy's going to make a request for council.
In your packet, you have a board and commission. October one is usually when I would start airing up and send out board and commission vacancies to anybody that is expiring at the end of the year or any vacancies that we just currently have. Currently, there's four boards that have an opening on them. The Construction Board of Appeals has one regular term. The Environmental Sustainability has one partial term. And the July Four Committee has two partial terms. And then the Tree Board has one. We don't really have any applicants on file right now that have expressed interest in those boards. So if you know anybody, tell your friends. It's on the website. We're doing a social media blast this week on that. They can go online, apply very easily. It goes right to me at my desk. It's, it's very easy to apply, so. That's out there right now on the website. I think it's the alert on the website right now, right? So very easy to apply. On October one, I'll be contacting all the board chairpeople, chairpersons to let them know who's expiring at the, this year, so. And we'll start collecting updated applications. That's beginning now, so tell your friends.
Thanks, Marcy. I know when there was a ZBA opening, I think we rallied and gave them many candidates to choose from. Was that the, the board that we tried to fill pretty immediately?
Um, I think it was planning, wasn't it?
There's been such a long string of them.
Yeah, there has. There's been a few.
We have a couple.
We do have a couple vacancies on the, on the story board that we need to address. Yeah, we'll have the board review.
Or that's who it was, it was board of review. Mr. Catter, yeah, that's right.
Yes.
That's right. Well, thanks for that reminder, Marcy. I know we have strength in numbers here, so let's do our best. Ken, anything else? You go right, let's go.
I just wondered maybe if Chief Banglin wanted to briefly talk about the citizens, police citizens academy.
Sure. We're going to be having our second class. It'll be starting up on Wednesday, October 5th. I'll run for six weeks again, just including a paper application in your packet. Citizens can apply right through the city webpage and the police department part of it. We had a couple council members stop in for a few seconds. We welcome any of you that stop in for either the whole class or any particular segment that interests you. If you have anybody that either wants to know more about us or complains to you about us, feel free to pass the application, tell us either way. It's just our way to try and have another enroll and make some connections with the community.
Thanks, chief. What was, what was the total number of, of the people who graduated from your academy?
We ended up with 15 of the last year, and for the first time, and we ended up not doing a final enrollment push because we didn't know if the fire ward was going to have their furniture in time, and they didn't want to have to carry that much stuff over from, to be, if it did, so. We're looking for a class, hopefully about between 3rd and 3rd.
Great. Thank you.
That's it from me.
Well, before we adjourn to a closed session, just a couple council member comments.
Randy, I just want to say thank you, Tammy, for all your years of service and dedication, and you've done an outstanding job, and I, we, I'm sure I can speak for all of us, we wish you the best. And thank you.
That's it. Go, Josh.
Yeah, thanks so much, Tammy. We'll miss you. Sad to see you go, but it sounds like a good opportunity for you to go with some warm weather and be closer to family, and I was just thinking, you know, when I, I started on the council, you were here in, I think, the deputy role for a short time when Tom retired and then took over. I don't know, you've been in the role for, what, 13 years, 12 years now?
2008, yeah.
Something like that. So, yeah, I started in 2007, so, I mean, you've been here, and we've been through 13, 14 budgets together, and, you know, everything always has run very smoothly, and, you know, I think just the way that things go with budgets and the way things go with finances and audits and everything is really kind of a testament to the work that you've done, as well as the, the team that, you know, works with you and the rest of the departments as well, and, you know, we really thank you for that. It's, you've made things very understandable for us as we go through budgets and we go through different financial decisions and things, you know, whether it be bonding or whether it be, you know, financing something, or whether we look at different ways to, you know, be creative with how we put our budget together every year. You know, you've done a great job with that. You're very receptive to questions. You've been great as far as taking time to explain things and be available to us, and, you know, just, we really appreciate everything you've done, wish you the best, and we'll miss you. So, thanks so much.
Justin? I wanted to acknowledge a great turnout for the Buck Creek cleanup. It went really, really well. Josh joined, and Mayor Moss and a host of other people. It was just a great turnout from the neighboring communities in Granville as well, so that was wonderful. This is going to get repetitive, I think, but, you know, as a council member, we're very fort, as council members, we're very fortunate because the city staff makes our position very easy, in my opinion. And the work that you've done, as Ken was stating earlier, I think what he was saying was for him, it's very easy for him to be in autopilot a bit in your position because it's just a steadiness and a reliability that is just so important in the position that you have held. So, as a council member, I just want to thank you so much for your transparency, your willingness to always provide us with those various options like Josh gave, and go back to the drawing board and see what else you can come up with when we've, you know, had further questions or wanted a different approach, and so I'm just really grateful for that, and above all, I'm really thankful for our, our MERS reamortization and the work that you did on that, because that was something that, when I first got on the council, I really did not understand why that was the way it was, and so I really appreciate all the work that you've done for that and for the city. Your position is one that residents maybe don't know the true value of, because they do interact with you and they know, not always probably, you know, in great interactions, but when they're angry or, you know, seeing their bills and stuff. Exactly, I'm sure of that. But the, the role that you have played has been incredibly valuable to them and to all of us, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Carol, thanks for coming tonight and sharing your observations on 44th and Potomac. I walk that route every, every morning. My wife walks it every morning. I, I join her occasionally, but, yeah, I, I think there are some improvements that can be done, so thank you very much for your comments. And Tammy, I, I've probably known you the shortest amount of time, you know, less than three years, but I will say, in the three years that I've come to know you and watched you work, I've realized that your handprints and footprints are all over this place, and that's a good thing. And so, for that, I say thank you as well for your years of service and for the great work you've done here in leadership in, in this city, and we're, we're sad to see you go, but we're happy for you and your family, and we're happy that, you know, you, you led us to Jane too, you know, as, as, as we're, as you're leaving, and she comes in. So, we're going to be in, 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 in good shape, but we certainly appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you know, when I was looking through the, the calendar of how long, you know, we had left with you, I thought about one of the first memories or first thoughts I had of you was when I was appointed to city council, I had a friend who worked in public auditing, and she said, Tammy is your finance director, you are walking into a wonderful, wonderful situation. And I didn't know what any of that meant, per se, but that's one of the first memories I have. One of the last ones was when you and Chief May scurried out of the, one of our last council meetings and put in that request for that fire truck, and we beat out two other municipalities. I think that just shows true dedication and drive for, for what's best, so.
We might take her home in that truck.
I think that'd be okay. So, thank you, Tammy, for obviously all your time. Well, I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn to a closed session under Section 8E under the Open Meetings Act for purposes of discussing pending litigation regarding commercial tax appeals for one, Chemical Bank, and two, Rivertown Crossing Acquisition LLC. Or motion two, adjourned.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norbuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. Thanks, Carol, everybody.